Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, June 16th, 2015, regular meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for seven o'clock. I'd like to ask our Vice Chairman Norman to please return the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all who came this day. Lord bless them, bless our employees, and their rest of staff, and Lord help our troops that are far beyond here, but work hard to protect us. Give them strength, Lord. Give them energy and give them love. Lord, we thank you for this day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Myself allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice drawn. Mr. Smith, if you could review any adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few adjustments. First, I'd like to remove both items off of the closed session agenda. One was attorney-client, and the other was real property purchase. And also would like to add, under Section 9, announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Troutman ETJ has one announcement, and this was approved by the town council last night.
The adjustments to the agenda being noted. Is there a motion to accept the adjustments to the agenda?
The move.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. There will be no recognitions this evening or special awards. There are no appointments before the board, so we will move directly into public hearings. The first public hearing will be to consider an economic incentive for Project Kobia, and Mr. Mike Smith should be presenting that information.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory, members of the board. We appreciate your allowing us to be here this evening to talk about two different projects that are considering Iredell County. I would like to call our Director of Business Recruitment and Retention, John Merrick from my staff, to talk more about both of these projects.
Good evening, Chairman Mallory, County Commissioners and staff. Statesville Regional Development comes before you tonight with requests for industrial tax grant incentives on behalf of two manufacturers located in Iredell County. The first this evening is Project Kobia. This project involves the retrofitting of a currently vacant industrial building, the relocation of an existing business unit from another location in North Carolina, and the addition of new manufacturing equipment with a net job gain of 30 for Iredell County. The anticipated capital investment will be between 3.25 million and 3.75 million over two years. The company is involved in a variety of different advanced manufacturing sectors, but the relocating business unit competes primarily in the advanced metalworking sector, pays a wage above the county average, and covers at least 50% of its employees' health insurance costs. Based on its investment, the company is requesting a grant between $51,639 and $59,584 to be paid over five years. As per county policy, this grant would be self-funding, and no funds would be dispersed until the company has made the required investment and paid its property taxes in full. For competitive reasons, they risk to remain anonymous at this time. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? I'll call the public hearing portion of this agenda item to order. We have one individual who has signed up, Mr. Richard Beck. Mr. Beck, if you could please just announce your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limitation on presentations.
Thank you. My name is Richard Beck, 356 Riverbird Circle, Mooresville, on East Side of Mooresville. I'm retired. I wasn't employed by Fish Mine Company in Statesville, so came through town every day. Just a comment, I'm glad that the county has some opportunity to bring a couple more firms into the area at a decent wage for the average blue-collar worker, but it's definitely, and my comment pertains to tolling of I-77, these are not the kinds of wages. They're good for Iredell County, they're good for Statesville. I applaud the work you're doing, okay? Because the town needs it, the county needs it, but these are not the types of wages that NCDOT is looking for in the Iredell County corridor to fund tolls on I-77. A wage about $45,000 a year will yield 15, take 14%, 10% off before taxes, the person's left with $38,000, $39,000. They're not going to be able to afford tolls, and that's the only point I want to make. Again, I commend the Development Corporation for going out, doing hard work to bring jobs into the area. Statesville needs it, the county needs it, we all need it. People need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Is there anyone else in the audience here this evening that did not have an opportunity to sign up that would like to be heard on the elements of Project Kobia? Appearing to be none. I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion or comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve an economic incentive ranging between $51,639 and $59,584 over a five-year period, based on the company's investment ranging between 3.25 and 3.75 million and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt just a moment? Mr. Merrick, did you say five years or two years?
The investment is being made, excuse me, the investment is being made over a two-year period. However, the incentive would be paid out over a five-year period.
Okay, thank you. I apologize.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
The second request we would like to make tonight is for Project Albicore. Project Albicore involves the planned physical expansion of an existing facility and the addition of new equipment in three phases over a four-year period. The total anticipated capital investment in this project will be $96.6 million, and the new full-time jobs created will be 83. The company is involved in the automotive sector, pays a wage above the county average, and covers at least 50% of its employees' health insurance costs. Based on its investment, the company is requesting a total grant of $1,828,272. That's $459,023 for Phase 1, $735,097 on Phase 2, and $634,152 on Phase 3. Each of these would be paid over six years. As per county policy, this grant would be self-funding, and no funds would be dispersed until the company has made the required investment and paid its property taxes in full. For competitive reasons, the company wishes to remain anonymous at this time. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Merrick? I'll call and order in session the public hearing for the economic incentive for Project Albicore. I do not see that anyone has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard? Mr. Beck?
May I please add my prior comments for the first project to this project? Same comments. I think great jobs for the county. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Duly noted and incorporated by reference. Any additional comments? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve an economic incentive of $1,828,272 over a six-year period, based on the company's investment of $96.6 million and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. All in, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Merrick and Mr. Smith. Item C is Public Hearing for Pine Lake Preparatory Incorporated in respect to the proposed issuance of $35 million in education revenue bonds. And we have...
Chris Terrell, Head of Schools at Pine Lake Prep. Thank you.
It's good to see you.
We'd like for you to consider allowing us to issue these bonds on the open market. The one thing that I will stress to you is that there's no taxpayer liability in issuing these bonds, and there's no debt that's borne by citizens of Iredell County, but we are located in Iredell County, and it must go through this council. Thank you.
And I'll call to order the public hearing for the Pine Lake Preparatory, Inc. request. I see that no one has signed up to be heard specifically. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Any further discussion? And is there a motion?
Chairman, motion to approve this request.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion?
I just want to congratulate these folks, Mr. Chairman, on meeting the educational needs of a significant number of our students here in Iredell County without raising taxes or increasing the debt load of the county. I dare to be congratulated for that.
Any further comments? Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. None. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This time we'll have a public hearing to give staff direction on the naming and addressing for the Mazepa, Cornelius, and New Connector Road. Mr. Matthew Ton.
Good evening to the board. Tonight, staff is requesting a direction from the board on the naming of the connector. We had a public input meeting here about a month ago in the Mazepa community that included Cornelius and Mazepa property owners. You can see there were four options that were presented to the community, with the overwhelming majority picking Option 3, which is to give the New Connector piece between 21 and 115 a separate name that would not impact any of the Cornelius addresses or the Mazepa addresses. That seemed to be the preferred option from the community, and then there were, again, three other options that were presented at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ton. Prior to opening up the actual public hearing, I would like, because I think there's probably a majority of folks that are here have interest in this item, without prejudging or preordaining or forecasting a specific result, I will tell you that, on the basis of the feedback that was received by the staff at the public information hearing and communications, I know to all the commissioners, and especially to Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Bowles, who were present at that public information meeting on behalf of the board, that the inclination of the board is to adopt Option 3, which would be to leave Mazepa and Cornelius Roads named as they currently are named, numbered as they are currently numbered, and to have a completely different name chosen for the connector between Cornelius Road on Highway 21 and Mazepa on Highway 115. As to the naming of the road, it would be our inclination, based on communications from the town of Mooresville, that they are desirous of having some input into that name selection, and understanding that this road is in the Mooresville extraterritorial jurisdiction, as well as recently adopted overlay plan, that it would be appropriate to request the town of Mooresville to adopt by Town Board resolution a name for that portion of the road, as we've described before, and that by their adoption, that we will ratify that decision on the date of their resolution. So without having to have further deliberations, whatever the town of Mooresville decides as far as the name, then that's what's going to stick. So that is our inclination without prejudging things. So, that being said, I will now open the public hearing portion of this hearing, and we do have two individuals, at least that have actually signed up, and I would ask each of you to come to the podium and announce for the record your name and address. Mr. Robert Alphent?
I'll come to the podium, sir. Sit, you know, sit here. You sit.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, everyone's comments were respectfully and passionately conveyed at the public information meeting and in other forums and in communications, so we appreciate your willingness to come to this evening. Mr. Randy Hedrick?
Thank you, sir. I myself also have no public comments. I'll thank you for your inclination to leave Cornelius Road as is and Mazepa Road as is. My mother and father built a house on Mazepa Road in 1972.
If you're going to comment, you need to come to the podium, or else not comment. You just need to get a good record. You know, it's hard to pick up...
I apologize. My name is Randy Hedrick, and I, my mother and father built a house on Mazepa Road in 1972, and it's been home for me there since then, when I was 16. And I just wanted to say I have no further comment except to thank you for your inclination to leave Mazepa Road as is with the numbers as is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would desire to be heard that did not have an opportunity to sign up? Yes, sir.
My name is Jack Combs. My address is Triplet Road. Sir, I'm not really involved in changing of the addresses, but I consider myself in the Mazepa community. And I feel like that, just like change, if they were to change Mazepa Road to East Cornelius Road, that'd be the same as like changing Cornelius Road out past Blueberry, Bluefield Road, changing that to Mazepa Road. It just don't fit. And like when you have the same thing coming off of Brawley School Road, it comes up to Highway 21, and when you cross Highway 21, it becomes Wilson's, West Wilson Street. And so if you were to change, make it Cornelius Road all the way through from where Cornelius Road is now, all the way up to the end of Mazepa Road, that'd be like changing Brawley School, changing West Wilson Street to Brawley School Road, and making it East Brawley School Road through the Mill Village. It just don't make sense. So I feel like that we need to keep the Mazepa Road as name, and as well as, of course, the addresses, eliminating the hassle of changing all the addresses. So I'd just like to see it stay Mazepa Road, and if you were to change it, it'd be like ripping our hearts out there in Mazepa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Is it Combs? Was it?
Combs.
Combs, okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else care to be heard? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any comments that any members of the commission would like to make relative to the process and the responses?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a couple here. As I mentioned earlier, I don't know that being a county commissioner does a whole lot to contribute to your financial well-being or sometime your mental well-being, or dramatically contributes to the longevity of life, but one thing I have witnessed, it will keep you from the sin of pride, because when you make a mistake, even the most gentle and loving folks will remind you that you've made a mistake, and we made a mistake. If you look at it purely from a logistical standpoint, as we did originally, I don't think we can, you can find a lot of fault in it. I think the mistake that we made was underestimating the sense of community that exists in the Mazepa community, and I'll apologize for my part of that. As I said earlier, if you drive down Brawley Peninsula tonight and you ask half of the people on Brawley Peninsula, whereas Mayhew Community, they can't tell you. It got gobbled up. This is not Brawley Peninsula, this is the community of Mazepa, and if there's one thing missing in our collective culture today, it's a sense of community. And I congratulate the folks in the community of Mazepa that they have worked and persevered in maintaining a sense of community. Having grown up in a small town in South Carolina, it was so small, it was located right between "Please Don't Litter" and "Resume Safe Speed." So I know what a small town is, I know what a community is, I grew up in it, and for a brief moment in this deliberative process, I forgot where I came from, and you folks reminded me, and I appreciate that. I congratulate you. So I would like to offer a motion that we send a formal request to the town of Mooresville to name the Connector Road in between Mazepa and Cornelius. They'll provide the majority of the funding for it, and at some point, it will come under their zoning, so I think it's on the property that they do it. I think that our request should include the fact that it would be a different name than Mazepa or Cornelius, so that it will not interfere any of the street numbers on either one of those roads. So the folks along Mazepa or Cornelius will not have to change their house number, any of the bills that they get, the residents, their house number on their checks or anything else. They'd be, done nothing to inconvenience those folks. And that Mazepa Road remains Mazepa Road, Cornelius Road remains Cornelius Road, and the Connector Road be called something other than that. Again, I thank the folks from the community of Mazepa for reminding me what it is like to live in a community, and reminding me where I came from, and I say that humbly, and I congratulate you folks. So I'll offer that in the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I would like to add to Commissioner Johnson's remarks, just to give you a little context about the process that was involved. Some years ago, in the 1990s, when the county was transitioning through a lot of different naming conventions of new roads and transitioning from rural routes and state roads and all of that, a policy was adopted that, you know, you want to have not segmented names for roads, but as much as possible, one continuous name. That was a policy that, in the process of naming everything out there in the county, probably brought some sense of order out of chaos, and was able to focus in on that time. But like so many things in government, you know, policies that are adopted under one set of circumstances rarely get taken off the books, rarely get modified, they just continue to roll on, and it just becomes how you do business. And in fairness to our planning staff, they were simply taking the policy that had been adopted many years ago and applying it consistent with the stated intent of the county commission. Well, as Commissioner Johnson has outlined, it's helpful to be reminded by citizens of, you know, the impact of policies, these second and third order effects and unintended consequences that sometimes you get into. And so what that raises is the need to really address the policy and to provide the staff more guidance as far as when looking at these in the future, that one of the factors that ought to be considered is the hysterosity of areas and that sense of community that Commissioner Johnson outlined, because that is indeed what sets apart Iredell County from so many other counties, is that sense of place and the heritage that we have, going back into the late 1740s when this county was founded. So while there may be some areas of the county that are growing at break-net speed, and where there is very little citizen interest or concern over place names, there remains, and thank goodness it's there, that sense of community and historical context that can remind us of what our roots are. So our goal out at following this is to fine-tune our policy to make that something that the staff takes into consideration as we work forward, no doubt in the future, as road net is expanded. So I want to thank the Mazepa community in particular for your, as I said, respectful but passionate communications concerning the importance of your community and its name in the context of Iredell County's history. So thank you very much. At this point, we will move to administrative matters, and skipping over Item A... Pardon? Yes, yes, we did, before the comments. They voted. Yeah, my, those were closing.
Oh wait, Rita says you did not.
No, you did. I'm sorry. You did vote. I'm sorry.
Okay, moving to, Mr. Smith, if you could summarize the administrative matters excluding Item A that have been moved for the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first item was a request from Iredell Statesville Schools for approval of a lease purchase agreement in the amount of $439,900 with Energy United. There was a request from the Finance Department to approve an amended project ordinance to close the Animal Shelter Project Fund and transfer the funds to fund balance and assign that to Future Capital Projects. Request from Finance to approve an amended project ordinance to close the Scotts Rosenwald Park Project Fund and transfer those funds to the Future Parks Project Fund. Request from Finance to approve an amended project ordinance to close the West Iredell High School HVAC Project Fund. Request from the Finance Department for approval of a five-year agreement with Bingham Arbitrage Rebate Services. Request from Finance for the adoption of Cool Spring Elementary School Capital Project Ordinance. Request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment 34 for the 2015 GEO Refunding Bond and Budget Amendment 35 for the 2015 Limited Obligation Refunding Bond. A request for sole source award of a purchase contract and approval of a five-year A request for sole source award of a purchase contract and approval of a five-year contract with Cott Systems to upgrade computer systems in the Register of Deeds office, and this would be contingent upon approval by the purchasing manager. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the refunds and releases for May 2015, and a request for approval of the minutes for May 6th, 7th, and 19th, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item A is a request from the Planning Division, consider calling for a public hearing for a request by Triangle Real Estate of Gastonia Incorporated to release ETJ to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Smith?
I actually turn this one over to Matthew Todd.
Okay, sorry, I see you standing there.
This is a request just for a call for the public hearing for the release of a property off Dooley Road. It's right at 13 and a half acres. It's outlined in blue on the screen. Currently, the county has its own general business conditional use district. If the town was to take it in, they would sign it alike zoning with the same conditions. And again, this is a request for release of jurisdiction for water and sewer purposes so the owner can proceed forward with some development on the property. Again, it's just for the call for the public hearing at this time.
Any questions from Mr. Todd? Any discussion?
Mr. Todd, at this time, you cannot tell us what would be going in there once it gets into Mooresville jurisdiction, am I correct?
Yeah, I do not know the proposed development at this time.
You don't know who the person is, you don't know anything about this?
Just the applicant is all we have.
Any additional comments or questions?
And just, I mean, we've got one of the Mooresville Town Board members here. It's our desire, if we can, to get this, to get a process so that if somebody asks us to release ETJ, that the town will actually take them in within three months or do it quarterly as opposed to waiting for a year. And so some of our discussion was whether or not to go ahead and do this release now or wait till we add a policy. But I think definitely the intent of this board is to not be granting these year-long waiting periods in the future, but to do it only if Mooresville is going to take them in in a reasonable period of time. We discussed this with
I agree with that.
With the Mooresville, I think, was it the mayor? I know it was the county with the
Town manager.
Yeah, the mayor was there.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with everything that Mr. Robertson just said. I know that we disagreed to a degree earlier. I just think that in regards to this specific request and any requests that are already in-house at our planning office, we ought to proceed under the existing rule. If we want to say after a specific date, we won't consider until the county and Mooresville has worked out an agreement, I'm okay with that. But business people make business decisions based on the rules in place at the time they make those decisions. And for us to change the rules on this person, it may do them no damage, but the other two folks, it very well could because financing on these types of projects are done well in advance of the actual beginning of construction. So I think it would be unfair to this person to not go ahead and give this the same consideration that we would give any other request under the rules that we have in place at this time. So I think we ought to go ahead and proceed with this one. And I do agree with Mr. Robertson, what he said, because not only can, not only can plans change for a specific parcel of property, Mr. Robertson, an entire economy can change in a year and dramatically change the intent of that property owner. So I agree wholeheartedly with that. I just think anything that's in the process, we need to go ahead and treat under the existing rules.
Can you tell me what those rules are, Mr. Todd, at this time, what Mr. Johnson's talking about?
Just the process, the process for an ETJ release is that they have to have gone to the town prior, and the town has to approve water and sewer in order for us to take it before this board. So that, you know, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of times, people that know our process, they don't come to us first. They go to Mooresville first to get that ball rolling, and they get on Mooresville's agenda to get water and sewer, and then they come to us. So that's the process that's in place. Sometimes they start with us because they don't know, and we inform them of the process. But then often, they go straight to Mooresville because they are familiar with the process, and it just works its way through us.
Okay. Any further discussion or comments, questions? Okay, is hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant, we grant this request, a call for a public hearing for request by Triangle Real Estate of Gastonia to release ETJ to the town of Mooresville.
A motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to one. Thank you, Mr. Todd. At this point, we have announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. This is one of the items on the adjusted calendar, adding an announcement for the Board of Adjustment for Troutman ETJ. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is actually for the planning board.
Oh, it's the planning board. The planning board for the town of Troutman? Not the Board of Adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Well, I stand corrected, this is an announcement for the planning board for the town of Troutman Any further discussion? Do we need a motion on this announcement, or we just?
I don't think you do, not for this.
Okay, consider it announced. Moving on to item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. Have two appointments to the Mooresville Planning Board ETJ.
Mr. Chairman, I'll place a nomination, Danny Martin and Mark Brady.
Nominations have been placed by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, Partners' Behavior Health Management Board, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Bill Purchase.
Purchase is nominated. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, Region F Aging Advisory Board, two appointments. Can't get to him, Mr. Chairman. That's actually for a primary and an alternate.
I'll nominate Lou Greta Raven as a primary and Denise Bear as an alternate.
Nominations made by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Finally, the City of Stasiel Planning Board, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Beau Walker.
Walker's nominated by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The two additional boards, the Iredell County Planning Board, for which there are three appointments, and Mitchell College, Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, for which there is one appointment, we're going to defer action on those until the next scheduled meeting of the county commission. Unfinished business. Ms. Beth Dirks, have our monthly inmate reduction committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As has been the practice for the past several months, I'm here to present the results on the ongoing efforts of our inmate reduction results and efforts. This is before you, I think everyone has the spreadsheet. If you'll look at the numbers for the month of May, we have two programs that are still ongoing, and we have one that we're ramping down. The numbers for the new jail bailiff position, there were 13 new inmates that were processed and 315 days that were saved. And then I've calculated the savings, that's predicated on $70 per day. Then for the ADA, the county-funded ADA position, 21 new inmates were processed for the month of May that resulted in 361 days saved, and I've calculated the savings for that as well. The APO program, which is the program that we are ramping down, there were 29 days for the month of May that were saved in that program, and that's just the residual days for those participants in that program. We are also tracking on the right-hand side, the jail population for the beginning of the month and ending of the month. Just as a reminder, those days fluctuate. Any given day, they go up or down, but we're tracking on a monthly basis, so I'm giving you the beginning jail population and the ending jail population for that month. Down at the bottom are your graphs that can give you kind of a pictorial view of what those results have been. And again, you know, with these programs, we saw an increase as we started the program, but we're starting to see where they're balancing out and kind of where our plateau is, and we'll continue to track these on a monthly basis. Any questions?
Ms. Dirk? Thank you for your dedicated tracking process. It's gratifying to see that the new ADA has been moving, you know, pretty much from month to month, getting their sea legs and, and that the bailiff working in the jail has just continued to produce good results. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to the public comment period. We do have three folks that have signed up for the public comment period, and as I call you, if you would please come up to the podium and announce your name and your address, and please note that there's a three-minute limitation on public comments at this time. So first is Ms. Connie Evans.
Connie Evans, 1718 Brawley School Road. I'm reminded of the old TV show, Who Do You Trust? Or The Price is Right? Or maybe it's like the show, Let's Make a Deal? But we're not playing games about toll roads. We fought hard to widen Brawley School Road, and now I'm engulfed in another battle for common sense in politics. We've submitted over 5,000 names on petitions to the governor, protested on bridges, written innumerable letters to legislators, filed an injunction, sold bumper stickers and T-shirts, held numerous community meetings, kept emails and Facebook busy. It's been a slow and tedious process, but finally, the real issues are surfacing. Now the business leaders are realizing the implications and the impact on our communities. You talked about communities. It's time for truth or consequences. Consider safety and egress, crossing over lanes at different speeds to get off the tolls. Effects on local businesses since there will be no exits at 25, 23, 28, or 30. Effects on property values, time and gas wasted. If you're on the toll lane in an emergency, you do not have access directly to two hospitals. Then there's the pollution, financial burdens, inconveniences to take parallel roads in an accident or hazard. The personal stories that I hear every single day are horrendous and complicated. Transparency does not exist. If Sintra from Spain were trustworthy, prepared, open, and organized, we wouldn't have experienced delays in financial closure. A missed deadline is a symptom of incompetency of what is to come. Scare tactics are now being used to say general-purpose lanes couldn't be considered for many more years. Just take it and say, "Thank you." Well, no, thank you. I care too much for my grandchildren who will face the financial burden for the next 50 years. We will be losing our freedom in Lake Norman by sitting in congestion. It's not just a road, it's a change of lifestyle. We are worried, frustrated, but not defeated because the facts are being unveiled. If only you, our elected officials, will have the courage to continue to stay strong while others are playing games with us. Remember, you never appreciate what you have until it's gone. That's like toilet paper, a good example, and also our general-purpose lanes, that's another. Mecklenburg County right now is passing a stronger resolution to support our lawsuit right now. We are having four fundraisers to support our lawsuit, and we will take this to the North Carolina Supreme Court if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And Mr. Jim Evans? Mr. Richard Beck? This is a twofer for you, Mr. Beck.
Yes, sir, it was interesting reading the agenda this morning because I learned some things, which is good. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Times have changed in NCDOT, and the state government refuses to recognize change. The economics for tolling I-77 have changed since five years ago. Reference to Commissioner Johnson's comments about the Triangle Real Estate request. Times have changed, the economy has changed in the area, and all for the good. So the question is, is NCDOT willing to change? Is the governor willing to change? Is this commission willing to change from a delayed resolution to a resolution asking for termination? The state talks about the cost to terminate the contract. Local media states that the cost to terminate will be 50 to 100 million dollars. Those numbers have 100% error rate. Last evening, local news on WBTV stated that the NCDOT says the cost to terminate will be hundreds of millions. Which is it? My numbers, based on available documents and court records, indicate the cost today to be approximately $24 million. This is .001117% of the proposed state budget of $21.47 billion noted in today's Charlotte Observer. This is 1/1,000th of a percent of the proposed budget, almost too small to measure. One could posit that the state wastes this amount every week. That amount to some is just a rounding error. Addressing congestion, the media says NCDOT has stated that adding the toll lanes will relieve congestion. This is false. NCDOT has repeatedly, as has I-77 and WIL partners, stated that the pricing model for toll lanes is based on congestion. Dimension of congestion is a significant factor in Fitch Radiant Service and DBRS Radiant Service pre-bond sales bulletins concerning the private activity bonds. NCDOT says that local government agencies ask for the toll roads. I state that's blatantly false. This commission, the rest of the county, and everyone else ask for congestion relief. NCDOT says local agencies consented. Definition: Consent can only be measured when an individual or other entity can choose between two real alternatives. The agencies were presented by NCDOT with two unrealistic alternatives, namely, do nothing for many years, we don't have the money, or submit to tolls. NCDOT, in essence, held a gun to your head and forced consent as there were no real alternatives. NCDOT, may I continue?
Well, it was the pleasure of the board. We have one more minute.
Thank you. NCDOT says there'd be little or no impact on the local economy. NCDOT says there'd be little or no impact on the local economy. Lower local expenditures, which will lower sales tax revenues, stifle local business while sending the dollars to Raleigh and Spain. This is called a negative impact on the local economy, but a boon for Raleigh and Spain. Remember, Ross Perot and the sucking sound in NAFTA, Idale County, North Carolina, still suffers from that. It is my contention that this agreement represents a revenue boon to Raleigh at the expense of the local economy. It is an income transfer, otherwise known as income redistribution. Tolls make I-77 a rich man's highway. I'll reference back to my early comment about wages. Using, I'm sorry, I'll finish at that point. I can make some more comments, but I believe you have my point. I would please ask you to reconsider what has been done to do another more strongly worded, forceless statement to the state. This will be an economic detriment to Idale County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard during the public comment period? Hearing none? Any comments?
I'll make a few. I've known Connie Evans for many years, and let me tell you, there's a, she is a, she is an, a smart advocate, and when she comes and says, hey, I think the toll lanes are a bad idea, you know, you should, we should always sit up and listen. Here's the problem, though, that we have, is the contract for this was signed in 2014. The contract's already signed. It's already signed. There is a provision where if the contract is broken, and by the way, I don't like the contract, never liked the contract, still don't like the contract, but it's signed. The governor said he's not going to break it. And right now, he's the one who, if he breaks it, then, then the discussion is, where's the money going to come from to break it? Is it going to come out of our allocation of future road funds? Will they ask the counties and the municipalities who have said, "Break the contract," will they say, "Well, we'll break it if you pay for it." Would we be willing to pay for it? We know that the General Assembly and the State Senate is not going to say, "Break the contract" if they have to pay for it. I mean, we know that. And they're not going to take highway dollars from their districts to pay for it. The only, the only chance that this contract will be broken is if the lawsuit prevails. That is the only chance. And if it prevails, then we're back to ground zero, which is, okay, you know, now, now we've got to get in a, in some other queue, some other line for funding, and, and all I can tell people is I know, I get so many emails where people are very simplistic about how they think money is allocated for roads. It is one of the most convoluted, complex groupings of different pots and piles of money that can be used in certain areas for certain things, and that is set by the General Assembly and the different MUMPo's transportation, or regional transportation planning organizations have to operate within those, within those guidelines. It's, it's not as easy as it sounds. The time to have had this massive upswing of public support or rejection of the toll road concept needed to occur in 2012 and 13. And I went to those meetings, and there was twenty people there, or thirty people there. And now, it, it just didn't get traction. Everything that you said is correct. We were given two options, this toll road or nothing. Those were the two options. And other options really weren't considered at all. So, so we find ourselves in a most difficult spot. What I will say is this, is this board has been consistent. We never came out and said we were in favor of the toll road concept. We, we never were advocates for it. We never paid the salary of anybody to go be an advocate for it. However, we did pass a resolution several weeks ago, expressed our concerns, and those concerns, I feel sure, will be used in the lawsuit to show, when they go to prove or disprove or make the case, that is this contract in the public good. And they'll make that argument. But make no mistake, that this board, we can pass a resolution every time we meet for the next year, and it will not change the fact that that contract is signed, and somebody's going to have to pay to break it if the court doesn't break it. And until somebody shows up with that amount of money, I, I just don't, I just don't see that we should expect any government body to say, "Break it." Okay? I mean, I just don't see Cornelius and Davidson and Huntersville and Mooresville and Idale County ponying up ten million or fifteen million or twenty million each to break this contract.
The fifty-year contract, am I right?
The fifty, like, like I, I'm on the CRTPO, and I'm going to tell you, that's one of the questions asked the Secretary of Transportation, which was, who thought of fifty years? I don't know any businesses that enter into fifty-year contracts. I mean, there's so much, and I, I'm not going to go into it tonight, but I mean, there's, there's a lot about the contract that makes you ask, you know, why did we, you know, why in the contract did NCDOT agree to such heavy penalties this early in the, in the game? I mean, I understand if somebody's built a road, and then you want to get out of the contract, they need to be compensated for it, but if we, right now, you know, no dirt's been turned over, and yet there's a significant penalty that we have to pay if we break it, and, and the people who negotiated on our behalf agreed to that, and they agreed to the fifty years. I mean, most businesses, most people don't enter into any agreement that's longer than thirty. So, so again, I am not defending at all this contract or the concept of this type of toll road, but it certainly, the impression that I get is that, that the North Carolina Department of Transportation was acting in good faith, but somewhere, this thing, this whole effort morphed from getting a good agreement to get an extra lane built to getting any agreement, and any agreement turned out not to be a very good agreement. And unfortunately, it's signed, and that's where, that's where we are. And so, I'm, I really, I don't want to give people the false impression that by us passing proclamations or resolutions or anything of that sort, that we in fact have the power to change this, because the truth of the matter is, is that we don't. And if we did, and if they did give us the option, it will come with a price tag. So we need to be careful what we, what we ask for as well. So anyway, let's hope that the lawsuit prevails, and, and I hope that it does, and albeit the fundraisers, that, whether it's chicken or beer, or whatever it is, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll be there. I hope that they prevail. But I think that's our only mechanism. And again, if they do prevail, we will still have a problem in that there is not a pot of money that will pay for general-purpose lanes. And it still has to go through the CRTPO, which is a Charlotte, City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County-controlled organization, and they are in favor, or at least Charlotte is, City of Charlotte is, have been in favor of the toll roads as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robertson. Any further comments or observations?
I'll just echo what Mr. Robertson said. Frank Mitchell was here, former commissioner, I think he could echo what I'm about to say. Frank and I were asked to attend a meeting in Mooresville in 2011, I'm pretty sure is in February. And to echo what Mr. Robertson said, we were summoned there by the DOT, and we were told that it was a toll road or nothing. That that was, that was the two options. There was not enough money to buy the right-of-way to widen 77, much less pave anything. And if we wanted anything, it was going to be a toll road. And somehow, we went from that to this during the interim. But we were told that it had been predetermined that if we got anything, it was going to be a toll.
I think most of the objections that people have aren't that, you know, if they set up a toll booth and everybody had to throw two quarters in it as they drove by, I mean, I feel sure some people would object to that, nor is the objection really that, that there's a lane that, that, that really, it's not to reduce congestion, it's to always provide a rapid option through, through the 77 corridor if you have the money. Okay? And that's what the objection, and that's what the objective is. But I think the part that really has people rubbed wrong, and I throw myself in there, is that the only way that this project pays for itself is if, is if our government guarantees congestion forcing people onto those lanes. And I think that's what has people upset, as they should be, and, and that's, I think that's the real rub. That's the real tough part that, that folks have right now. And, and hey, I understand, I understand. But you know, if I can ask one more thing, and that is, you know, we've all been on different, these train, these transportation planning groups have changed, their borders have changed, who's in it, the compositions have changed, just in the ten years that I've been on this board. But I remember on one of my meetings, it wasn't the same one you were, but they, but it was flat said that there would be no federal money allocated for general, for general-purpose lanes to widen highways. For a while, there was, they could only be HOT lanes, and then it was going to be an HOT toll. So, so kind of the, you know, this whole process was never, ever, from the beginning, ever going to be, we're just going to widen it, we're just going to widen general-purpose lanes because the, the, the funding sources just, that's not what they were supporting. And you can call it social engineering and, you know, and, and stuff like that, but basically, they wanted only people carpooling to be driving. If they did build an extra lane, they only wanted people with multiple folks in the car on that lane, so it's, and this has been a long process. How many year, when you said you had your meeting, I mean, that was probably-
We were told, we were told in 2011, the thing had been in the plan since 2007.
Right.
From that, that far back.
Yeah. I'm thinking six or eight years back when I heard it.
I won't, I'll, I'll be careful here. Usually, when you come up with a business plan, when you're, it, far enough along in the business plan, though, when you're beginning to talk about borrowing money and satisfying debt, you've got a pretty good idea of what your debt service is going to be, what your operational costs, your fixed and variable costs, and you've come up with a hard number on that toll. Then you know the velocity, you, you have some reasonable estimate of the velocity, velocity of the use of whatever it is you're selling, renting, or whatever. In other words, how many customers you're going to have on an annual basis. Then you come up with a number assigned per unit of use to that so that you know you can generate enough revenue to satisfy that cost. So if you're this far in the process, you should be able to tell people how much the toll's going to be. In other words, if I'm going to sell you a hot dog, and I know it costs me this much to serve you a hot dog, and this much to pay the people to serve you, all the costs associated with that, and I think that I'm going to sell a hundred hot dogs a day, I know how much I have to charge per hot dog in order to make money off you. If they're this far into that process and they still can't tell you what the toll is, somebody had to have a firm grasp on what their costs are associated with-
I think they do know what the toll is. They just don't want to tell you.
Well-
They don't want to admit how high it'd go. Oh, well.
If it's, like I said, doesn't that, if it's, if the toll's high enough, you don't have to worry about any more residential development problems in Idale County. They will go to Rock Hill, or they'll go to Gastonia, or they'll go out toward Concord. If that toll is high enough, that's just, that's a fact of economics, they'll go somewhere else.
Where you go from Perth to one fifty to sixteen to forty-five.
That's how I go.
Work around. As has been noted, and, you know, we're on record opposing this, not in a, in a tenuous fashion, but, you know, saying, we need, for these very reasons, there needs to be due diligence to answer all the questions that you've raised, and that if they can be answered appropriately, that's fine. But if they can't, then as a state, as, as a region, then we ought to be reevaluating this whole process and whole project. And so this board is on record supporting that. I agree with Commissioner Robertson that in the absence of a friendly hearing of those concerns within NCDOT and the state, that it really is left to litigation, to be able to determine whether or not these liquidated damages are appropriate or have any bearing to real compensation for losses by the contract or whether that's just simply a poison pill that really exceeds any kind of equitable liquidated damages. And if the liquidated damages are deemed to be unreasonable and are reduced by the court, then it certainly may make, change these equations about, well, what, what entities are willing to pay those liquidated damages and in what proportions within the region. So that's a bridge that hopefully we'll be able to cross, and, you know, this board, I think, is very skeptical about the efficacy of this, this project as it's been proposed, and understanding good intentions, but we all know that the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and this is a road from hell. And to hell. It's a parking lot. So I think that there's a, a lot of frustration on, on the behalf of all of our elected officials and citizens, and we'll just have to let the process and the system play out, and where it's appropriate, and this board deems that additional action in support of that litigation, whether it's an amicus brief or some other form of participation, if that becomes what seems to be in the best interest of the citizens of Idale County, then we will certainly consider that as things develop down the road. But I think that we've chambered around and we fired it, and so at this point, we're along for the ride like everybody else. Okay? So thank you for coming this evening and sharing your concerns, as, as I know you represent a, a large number of folks, and I suspect there's still even a larger number of folks that have yet to become aware or informed about, you know, a lot of the details of the issue. We'll move on. No one else? Public comment? We'll move on to item fourteen, the county manager's report. Mr. Smith?
The only thing I have to report is just an update. I had mentioned a couple of meetings ago that our website was about to go live. We will be going live Friday, so that's a, that's a good thing for us. We'll start doing all of our applications online and sending out newsletters and such, so getting us pretty much up to, up to speed and up to date. That's all I have.
Item fifteen, the close- Item fifteen, the closed sessions have been removed and postponed. Any further business for the good of the order? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously. Adjourn.